I call the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission to order on February 5th, 2020. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to fill out a speaker's card and file it with Sherri. And I'm not sure, Maria, are you an applicant tonight? Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. It wasn't listed in the staff report. Speakers should state their name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes or less, and comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. No problem tonight. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey the orders of the chair. Sherri, could we have a roll call of the commission?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioners Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Corbin Absinthe.
Okay. Next is pledge allegiance. Commissioner Lottis, would you lead us?
Ready, go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Very good. The first item is public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. And seeing no public here, other than one applicant and city staff, I think we'll dispense with that. If someone comes in later and wishes to speak, we'll invite them to do so. Our consent item tonight is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, January 15th. Are there any adds, changes, or corrections to the minutes from any members of the commission? Hearing no objections, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the Ojai Planning Commission dated January 15th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Very good. Any discussion? Sherri, a roll call, please.
Powers.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Now, we're going to move on to the next item, ex parte contacts. We have only one item, I guess, to which that applies tonight, and that is the tree permit application for the First Baptist Church, 930 Grand Avenue. Commissioner Lottis.
Yes, I will be recusing myself from this item because I live next door to the, one of the, the real property line boundary.
As far as ex parte contacts, though?
Oh, sorry, no. I have had no ex parte contact. Well, actually, in the, prior to the application being submitted, I've had conversation with the property manager, Darryl Ralston, as has my husband.
Very good. I had visited the site and had no ex parte contacts.
I visited the site, and a neighbor came out because her dog was barking at me through the fence, and she introduced herself. So I had a brief conversation with the neighbor. Other than that...
But the neighbor, the neighbor is not one of the parties to this permit request?
No, no. Just an adjoining property.
Okay.
Yes.
I did not visit the property. I felt I didn't really know enough about trees to make any assessment, other than to say, "There's trees there."
I should say, I visited this property and had no ex parte contacts, but the applicant, the arborist, Maria Delgado, has done work on my yard in the past, so... All right, then we're on to the next, the discussion item, tree permit application.
And I will recuse myself of this item.
Okay.
Due to the being right next door to the property.
Thank you.
Very good.
Commissioner Lottis.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we still have a quorum.
Yes.
All right. Discussion item two, the tree permit application, T-20-003, for 50% pruning of two Valley Oak trees, removal of one hazardous Valley Oak tree located at 930 Grand Avenue, applicant Maria Delgado, on behalf of First Baptist Church. And I'd like to hear from staff first.
Certainly. Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Manager for the City of Ojai. The item you have before you tonight is a discussion item. The proposal is for the pruning of two existing Valley Oaks and the removal of one Valley Oak. There are a total of 10 trees on site that are being, well, nine trees on site that are being pruned. Seven of those trees are within the parameters of the municipal code, meaning that they are not pruning, the arborist is not proposing to prune any more than 25% of the canopy. Here, we have two trees that are being proposed to be pruned beyond that 25%. And I'll just go into a little bit of the meat on the two that are being pruned, and then we'll, then I'll provide some information on the one that's being removed for hazardous reasons. The first two, the pruning of the two Valley Oaks, one is being pruned due to the lack of early maintenance or pruning that should have taken place when the tree was much smaller to help with that growth and support later on in its life. It is now, later on in its life, a mature, a mature tree, and it's starting to show signs of stress due to the weight of the, of the structure of the limbs. So, the arborist and her assessment, Maria Delgado's assessment, has identified that there needs to be some structural reassessment, I guess I could call it.
Structural pruning?
Structural pruning to, to one of the leaders, to ensure the health and longevity of that tree. The same thing is true for the other Valley Oak, where there, because there wasn't early pruning and, and, well, I guess, dis-pruning that took place early on to ensure the full maturity and kind of balance of the tree, if you will, there is some issues that are showing, some signs that are showing because of that. And I would almost say drastic measures are taken here to ensure the health of that tree long-term as well. Those are the two trees that are being proposed for pruning. The tree that's proposed for removal due to hazardous reasons is, is also a Valley Oak as well, and that Valley Oak had a tear, if you will, that, and it's still out there currently. And it's because of this, this separation at the limb, and I think Maria can go into even more detail on this, but because of the separation at that limb, removing that limb can't be done without actually harming the tree beyond the perspective of its, of it, you know, having a much longer life. Eventually, though, there's more than likely going to be issues that'll come up with, with that tree. So, she's proposing that, she's deeming that tree to be hazardous, and that there, and in our code, when, per the municipal code, when it's being deemed hazardous, there is no requirement for replacement. So that's, that's the proposal before the commission tonight. Staff felt it was necessary to bring these three, these three, these three trees forward for discussion, and is looking to the, to the commission for direction.
Okay.
And, and really, the staff would like to move forward with approval for these, but certainly, we wanted to open this up for public comment and, and discussion.
Any questions for staff?
No, I'm good.
I have one, just one. "Will the pruning and removal of these three trees be done by or under the supervision of an ISA-certified arborist in accordance with the Municipal Code 4-11.06B? Thus, no permit fee?"
So, the, you're talking about for the removal of, of the said hazardous tree versus...
Removal of one tree and 50% pruning of two others, yeah.
Fifty percent for the other two. So there will be conditions of approval as a part of the approval letter that will be going out. Within those conditions of approval, it will include the requirement for onsite, an onsite arborist during the, and that's typical, even within the 25%. That's, that's going to be a requirement for that pruning to take place.
Is there normally a fee associated with a tree permit application?
Yes.
And is there one here?
Yes.
Okay. I got the impression somewhere that...
If it's, if it's deemed to be a...
There was no permit fee in this case, and I was wondering why.
Right, so as a hazardous tree, the fees, per our code, are waived. So it's, it's a matter of if it's determined to be hazardous, and they have the information that lines up with that, then yes, those fees are then, I guess, refunded, but, but they still have to go through the process of us evaluating that.
Okay, and that's not the same for 50% pruning or less than 50% pruning?
Correct.
Okay. So it was only for the tree removal that there was no permit fee? Or is it all one permit?
This is all lumped together.
Okay.
We're reviewing this holistically, yes.
Very good. So we've covered it with staff. Can we hear from the applicant, please? Come up. We won't bite.
We promise.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maria Delgado. I am a certified arborist, and I am also a tree risk assessor. The purpose of the proposed pruning is for the health of the trees. We are trying to correct defects that were supposed to be corrected when the tree was this little. If we leave these trees unattended, the trees will, in the future, long, in the long future, will fail by themselves, or we would have to make really large cuts that will make it more difficult for the tree to heal. We are not doing any, we are, this kind of pruning is not, has nothing to do with the allow 25% of yearly pruning allowed for a tree. This is more to correct the structure of the tree.
That's the two that have 50% pruning?
Yeah, the two 50% pruning. Now, the other one, because it, it split, the split happened right in the middle between the two branches, so there's no really a way to preserve one of the branches. It's right in the middle, and it's not safe to leave it there, because we can't make a clean cut, and whenever you can't make a clean cut to the branches, it encourages decay and eventually might just fail, and we don't want to take a risk, because this is an area where people walk, and, you know, it's, it's a hazardous condition, so we don't want to have any kind of risk for people walking under those trees.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I'll just, I'll just make a comment. I did go out to the site, and I just wanted to disclose, I'm not a certified arborist, but I've done a lot of training, I have a horticulture and landscape architecture and construction background, and I worked with two arborists for quite a few years. So I did look at all the trees, and I'm in agreement with your recommendations. I also walked around, and I noticed that you probably in the, looks very recently, had pruned a lot of the other trees, and I think a couple cuts on a few of these, but the cuts were all under four inches. I didn't have my tape, but I could eyeball it. So I'm assuming you went out and kind of did preliminary pruning, and then pruning on other trees, and then came in for the permit when you had to do something that required a larger cut. So I just, I wanted to commend you for that, and like I said, I, I'm in agreement with what you've proposed. Thank you, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm fine, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I, I do have a question at this point for staff. What do you want of us?
Right, so, this is, so what I'm looking for...
Oh, direct staff to approve, okay.
Direct, yeah. So basically, it would be a vote. Looking for a vote from, from the commission, so that I can move forward with the proper...
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to direct staff to approve the tree permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Sure, I'll make, oh, a public comment.
Oh. Yes. Hello there, member of the public.
I did not file a card, I'm sorry. So I'm just speaking as a member of the public, Kathy Lottis, and I just want to point out and emphasize that there are, there definitely are heritage Valley Oak trees out there on the property, not the ones that are being proposed for, well, actually, those, some of those are Valley Oaks, but they're not the big, the larger, really magnificent trees on that property. And there, there, there have been attempts to do work on that property in terms of cutting the Valley Oaks, the large ones, without a permit, and I've been involved in, in that past history. So I'm very happy that you've come in for the permit and that it's being reviewed according to the code, and I really, really appreciate that very much. And I think all that I ask is that special care be taken with the, these absolutely magnificent Valley Oaks out there. They truly are a precious resource to our city, and we need to take very good care of them, and we need to adhere to the regulations that we've got on the books, and I, I very much appreciate the pruning work being done with an onsite arborist. Thank you.
Thank you. You've made a motion to...
I started to make a motion, but I was wondering if I could ask one question of staff?
Oh, of course.
Sort of related directly, but not necessarily directly to the item in front of us, but it does have to do with the tree ordinance. And I had a question on the mature trees.
Okay.
So, the definition, it says, "Shall mean any tree species designated as such by a resolution of the city council based on its historical, cultural, or other values as determined by the city council," and then, "which is equal to or greater than 12 inches diameter," it's measured at four and a half feet above the root crown. So my question is, is there in a, a list, an approved list that city council has made, or is this like a per-item basis on what a mature tree is?
I am not aware of a list, so I would assume that it is on a, on a case-by-case scenario.
That's the way I read it, too.
Right.
Is that it's not a, not a blanket...
Right, so, so basically, like, for instance, there was an ash tree on that property, I'm just using that for an example, and let's assume that it's, you know, 15 inches in diameter, the DBH. So would the person who wanted to prune that, the arborist or the applicant, have to come in and go to city council to get it approved for that tree to be pruned? Because it's not, it's not an oak, it's not a sycamore, or, you know, and it's not on the heritage list.
So you're saying it falls within the parameters of it being considered a mature tree?
Yeah.
Right, versus it being within the parameters of it being a Valley Oak, or sycamore, or...
Right.
Coast live oak, within that...
Right, and there's not a list, nor, I'm wondering, and I looked, you know, I went online and looked, I didn't see it, is there a list that says, "Including these species," or, for example, "Here's a list of invasive tree species that don't necessarily apply to this mature definition"?
Mm-hmm. It, I think the reason why the mature tree is defined within that is because within this code, it specifically identifies what happens with oaks, what happens with oaks and the sycamores, what happens with mature trees, and then specifically what happens when it's not within that parameter, and it's really more of a non...
But that, that's simply a definition of mature tree. Where else, where else in here does mature tree pop up?
Yeah, so it pops up just in the, in the very next section, under both...
Right.
Let's see.
Right, because oaks, oaks are separated out, sycamores are, heritage trees are, and then another section is the mature tree, which to me would mean all other species.
Mm-hmm. That's the intention there.
1104 B1 says it takes a permit.
But you still would have to go to city council to get it pruned?
Yeah.
No, not city council. You'd have to come to, to, to City Hall.
Yeah.
And identify what the, what the pruning mechanisms would be.
Oh, okay.
And have that discussion.
Yeah.
So it gives us, it gives us a parameter in which to work from.
Okay, and then you would decide, okay, from there. All right, well, that's good to know, because that was a little confusing to me, and I, now I think I get it. Okay.
All right.
All right, so now, I'll go ahead and make my motion. All right, I'll make a motion that we adopt tree permit application, T-20-003, for the 50% pruning of two Valley Oaks and the removal of one hazardous Valley Oak tree located at 930 Grand Avenue. I think that's how we need to probably say it.
Yeah, I think, I think what you mean is, we're not, we're not approving the application. We are directing staff to approve the application?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll amend what I just said. So we're approving for staff to make the approval. Is that right?
You're appro, you're approving for, for the, to provide direction to staff to, to send out the approval?
Right, right.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Sherri, let's have a roll call, then.
Powers?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Excellent. All right.
Switch seats while Kathy comes in, so I'm not sequestered.
Oh, that's true.
All right, Maria.
Having the time out.
Absolutely.
You're not quarantined.
Yes. I'm going to beat this chair, because it's one of the less dangerous chairs.
I get it, it's, it's better to be two seats away from me at this point.
Well, isn't it not very dangerous?
Yeah, well, I've, I've been sick, so...
Oh, that's not what I meant.
Oh, is that what you're speaking of?
Yes.
Some of these, you lean back, and then you take a...
We may, yeah. We may, we may wish to suggest to the city council, or whoever it is that's the facilities director for the city, that they take a look at some of these chairs. They're pretty rickety.
Do you have the, where's the, can you turn on the screen here?
Yes, we're going on to item three. Drag this out again. Item three, the general plan update. The recommendation from staff is receive and file, and there's, there's a staff report here, and then a copy, Attachment A, of the consulting contract that the city has signed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if we can hear from staff on this, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. The item you have before you tonight is really a discussion. The agenda report is a receive and file. I've put together a PowerPoint in situations like this, I think it's, it's helpful. I've done the PowerPoint a little bit different than what you may see. There's not going to be a lot of words on each of these slides. It's really four questions, which is, which is kind of interesting.
There's a space to take notes.
Well, yeah, that too. And the four questions are framed within the context of the general plan, public input, things of that nature, and even role of the planning commission, right? So, I'm starting off with, what is a general plan? And there's lots of different definitions out there. I pulled a definition or a description, if you will, partially from the agenda report, and then partially from California APA and OPR, which is the Office for Planning and Research through the Governor's Office and...
What's the APA?
American Planning Association.
Oh, okay.
So, all those bits and pieces have got, have got rolled up into kind of the presentation we have for tonight. Now, this is a discussion piece, so I don't want to sit here and be presenting as, as a lecturer the entire time. If there are questions that you're having that come up during any of these, these Q and, these questions that I've, I put up here, feel free to, to stop me. This isn't meant to be a lecture. This is really kind of meant to be an open discussion, if you will. So, from the standpoint of what is a general plan? A general plan is a foundation for establishing goals, policies, and objectives to support the vision of the city. That's really kind of the foundation of what we're looking at here. The City of Ojai would update the general plan to guide the land development of the community for both the current period and into the future. I like to think of the, the general plan kind of as a roadmap. It provides you with a lot of information about a lot of different topics, and those, those are typically wrapped up into goals and policies and objectives.
Context and aspirations.
Aspirations. I don't know about aspirations, but certainly within the context of, of the goals and the mindset and the vision of what the, what the city and the community as a whole is looking to, to, to build upon, I guess, into the future.
Would you call it a constitution?
Yeah, I guess you could. You could to a certain degree. I was almost going to say no, but the more I start thinking about it, you could say yes, because there are bits and pieces within that that then guide the, well, for instance, the zoning map, right? Because you would have a land use map that guides then the, the zoning map, which is really the, the components that we, as a planning commission, certainly as staff, govern and hold true. So, yeah, absolutely, I could see that.
Page one of four, it says, "The general plan has been described as the constitution for a six..."
I did write that, yes, of course. Then yes.
Smart guy.
See, I was quoting you.
Now, with a general plan update of this nature, I think in the past, it would have been on the shoulders of staff to do this wholeheartedly, given the context and the natures of, of government code sections and bills that have been passed and updated over, over time. Having an outside source help, guide, and influence that, that information is helpful. And for that reason, like the Chair just mentioned, the city did enter into an agreement at the beginning of November of last year with Ramien Associates. Ramien Associates has several members on their team that are specifically trained in certain areas to help build the foundation for this general plan moving forward. Now, we already have a, City of Ojai already has a general plan. We already have something in place, but there are certain elements within that general plan that have not been updated in quite some time, which then leads me into slide number two. What are the general plan elements? And so, there are elements within the general plan that are required by state law. Those include the land use element, circulation, housing element, conservation, open space, noise, safety, and then a new one that has popped up, certainly discussed in 2017 and really came on board in 2018, and that's the environmental justice element. The, our general plan actually has two additional elements, which are not required, but are included, and certainly, I think there'll be some discussion on the future of those, and that's the recreation and air quality. Some of these elements were updated in the late 80s, some in the early 90s, some in the late 90s. The one that is required to be updated every eight years is the housing element, and that is up for renewal, if you will, and that's included within the budgeting component of this general plan update. So, not only are we updating the general plan and doing that heavy lift at this point, but we're also including the housing element as we transition from what's called the fifth cycle of the housing element into the sixth cycle.
Now, the, the, when you talk about general plan elements, and I've read it, but I suspect not everybody who's, who may be watching on television tonight has, there is a general plan document, and then these elements are like appendices to that document, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, when you talk about updating the general plan, you're talking about the main document itself, and then updating these topical elements.
Well, I would say that the appendices are supporting the, the general plan, each of these general plan elements. So you could have appendices that are technical documents that help to support and further, because there's really, I don't want to get ahead of myself here, because there are other... I don't want to get ahead of myself here, because there are others, other slides that, that were more than likely discussed that, but we can certainly discuss that right now. You have yourself a, a general plan that contains these, these various elements, and the elements are then supported by technical documents. Those technical documents are also within something referred to as an environmental document, something that this commission certainly will be weighing in on early on and in the process, as well as towards the end of the process. And that is an environmental impact report, an EIR. It's interesting, because it actually ended up being a program EIR, which is a little bit different than your standard environmental impact report in that it talks more in broad perspectives and can further other items that may be within the components of this general plan versus an environmental impact report, which focuses wholly, typically wholly on one specific project moving forward. So it, it's kind of interesting in that format.
I mean, I would just, in my perspective, as a land use planner in my past life, really, the, the elements, however many you have, whether it's just the required or optional in addition, I mean, that is, that is the general plan, those elements are your general plan, right?
Yeah, I mean, you would have an introduction.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Goes along with that as well. The, yeah, so I guess, I wouldn't call it an appendices.
All the policies, which are really the critical part of your plan are in, are all contained within the elements.
Absolutely, that's what really builds, builds upon the foundation. As well as something referred to as an implementation plan that helps to guide, you know, the, the development of whatever policies and, and potential guiding principles that we end up using moving forward. And those can even be folded into goals and policies and objectives to help further that implementation plan, so.
I have a question.
But when you're making, oh, just one more point. But when you're making land use decisions, the idea is to always relate the rationale for your decisions back to the policies of the plan.
Absolutely.
Sometimes I've, I've heard people get mixed up about policies and implementation. And really, the, the language, the policy language undergirds all of your land use decisions. I mean, when you're making.
I would say it even strengthens it to a, to a degree.
Well, it guides you, it guides you.
Looking for that guidance.
Right.
Right.
Does the general plan provide that vision for that specific?
Right.
That specific.
So, and when, so when we're making a land use decision, if we, especially with, you know, an updated general plan, we would hopefully be able to say, here's our decision and these policies, you know, one, two, three, four, whatever, are the reasons that we're making this decision the way we are.
Precisely. Because it can help support, yeah, absolutely. To the opposite of that, if there is a specific item that, that the community is not supportive of and staff is looking at it and the commission's looking at it, there is the potential of looking at it from the standpoint of, this is, this is clearly not something that the community and certainly the general plan supports for X, Y, and Z reasons, right? So I've seen it on, on both ends, where it can be either used to strengthen a project moving forward or it can be used to show how this project just doesn't really meet the vision of what, of what the, yeah, what the general plan is, so.
Okay.
My question is, you men, you mentioned environmental justice as being one of the elements. Could you define that?
I had a feeling that someone on this commission was going to ask that, so I actually do have.
I had a question, yeah.
There's a definition within the agenda report, but I actually put it in the, the presentation here as well, let me just read it off.
Okay.
The, the intent of the environmental justice element is to identify disadvantaged, low-income communities within a jurisdiction. And then it goes into, quote, which is disproportionately affected by environmental pollution and other hazards that lead to negative health effects, exposure, or environmental degradation. The environmental justice element is, is intended to identify objectives and policies to reduce the risk associated with such hazards. It's interesting, when I, I remember being in a meeting and we were discussing environmental justice and we had, no one had any idea what, what that meant. But as we started reviewing the, the definition and peeling back some of the layers, there's actually a heat map online that'll identify the disproportionate community areas within, within the entire state of California. So, and that heat map was developed previous to the environmental justice element being introduced, but I think it, it definitely was, was tearing off of that.
So were these were areas that were hotter, the hottest?
I'm sorry, let me describe what a heat map is. So the heat map would then describe those areas that are being identified as disproportionate or disadvantaged, community areas. Interestingly enough, when you look at that map, it doesn't include any of the areas within the boundaries of Ojai. So the way that I've seen this element be interpreted, and certainly we'll be having that discussion later on, is it may not be required, but that's to be discussed at a later date.
Well, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be appropriate to define what disadvantaged means within the boundaries of Ojai? Or is there a state?
There's a state mandate for how, how that definition would take place.
There.
Now, that doesn't mean that we don't include it.
No, I, no, I understand that, I'm just wondering if it's relative. So let's take the housing market and the prices of rentals, and only X percent of the, of the populace make enough to, to rent that speci, rent on the, you know, quote, market will bear average rental market.
Right.
So then, do we have our own scale of what disadvantaged means within the boundaries of Ojai? Or is it a state graph that says you earn under this much, or, you know?
Right, so that is actually provided through HCD, HC, or.
Right.
Housing and Community Development, that department provides an annual letter, I guess you will, a memo that then shows the income qualifying levels, whether it be.
For the whole state?
Yes, which, which is for the entire state, above average, moderate, low, very low, and extremely low.
So we're, we're not able to look at just our demographic and make our own assessment of what disadvantaged means?
Yeah, it's, that's true, it is by county, Ventura County is, is identified as one of the most expensive.
I, I did a little poking into this in, in the state code and, and other places. And where the staff report on, this is page two of four, the bottom paragraph there, it talks about identifying disadvantaged, low-income communities within a jurisdiction. And I couldn't find low-income communities. But I was able to find low-income area, a low-income area. And, and I wasn't sure what community meant, is that a group of people, or is that a patch of ground? Wasn't clear to me, it's still not clear to me. But low-income area, I did find a definition. It's an area with household incomes less than or equal to eighty percent of the statewide median income or as designated by HCD. But since it says area, it seems to me we're talking about a patch of ground, not a group of people. They may, that group of people may live on that patch of ground, but we're talking about that patch of ground. And I'm wondering, does, since we're talking about, about dirt now, not people per se, does the city have any parcel-by-parcel income data on the city? How else would we identify a patch of ground where the household incomes are laid at less than eighty percent of the statewide median?
That's the. Yeah, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, that's a great question.
I'm not opposed to writing an element, but we need to know what we're talking about.
Where's the data?
Yeah, the interest response may be by census tract, so I think that information will be teased out as we go through this process.
Yeah, that's the distinction I was wanting to make. And, and are we able to do it by bodies and not patches of ground in neighborhoods? For instance, just in my own personal life, I know a lot of single mothers who work three jobs just to afford a rent, but they're all over, they're in all sorts of neighborhoods.
Right.
I would consider them disadvantaged, but those are bodies, not patches of ground.
Right.
So does the environmental. Does the environmental justice element address that? Or is it only a patch of ground? And if it's only a patch of ground, can it be modified that it addresses individuals?
Well.
Not neighborhoods?
And the definition here that's, that's in italics, yeah, government code sixty-five, three oh two, so on, so on. It says disproportionately affected by environmental pollution and other hazards that lead to negative health effects. That again says to me that we're talking about a patch of ground, because people can move around away from sources of pollution or whatever. And so I'm just trying to figure out how we would do this. And I want to dominate the conversation here, but I have other questions for staff as well.
Yeah. Here's, here's, I think, here's my kind of blanket response to environmental justice is that information will be teased out as we go through this process. And certainly, I can anticipate that our consultant will be identifying that and going into even, potentially down, potentially down even more rabbit holes to tease out that information. There's been discussion on.
We don't have any refineries in town, for example.
Right.
So we don't have any people living next door to refineries or.
Hydro power ones.
Yeah.
No, but we do, we do have older, lower-priced homes that are full of black mold.
And lead paint, who knows?
Sure, sure, well, yeah, that's sure, there's some older homes there. So there's, there's really two ways to look at this environmental justice element, that it either have legs and stand on its own two feet or it be sprinkled throughout the general plan document itself, through goals and policies and objectives. I think that's the way that I've, I've seen it and certainly been a part of, of bringing that to the forefront. So anyway, I don't want to, I want to stay at the ten, at the twenty thousand foot level.
Right.
I totally agree. I appreciate.
We just want to raise the issue of how do we figure this out?
Certainly, and that'll be coming up.
And the definition that you provided, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I, I did have another question. You mentioned an EIR for the general plan update.
Correct.
My experience, limited as, as it is, is that you do an EIR to reflect the environmental impact of somebody either building something or destroying something in the environment. And, and it has typically been, in the cases that we've seen in the planning commission, that a, a particular project or program is categorically exempt from SEQA and no EIR is required, because it's only changing the rules, it's not proposing to build or destroy anything. Why is it that a general plan update, which once again, as, as lofty or as base as it might be, is changing words, it's not proposing to build anything or destroy anything? So why do we need an EIR?
Yes.
Other than it's a state requirement?
Right, it's, well, it's, yeah, a state requirement. But in, in addition to that, you're looking at, we would be looking at, remember at the very beginning I had talked about a land use map? That land use map will have different colors throughout our city, right?
True, yeah.
Those colors could change, and that will then impact growth, traffic, air quality, there's a whole host of things that we've got to look at. And the environmental document provides that foundation to say, at what point can we mitigate these components, these elements that are being proposed? These potential units or traffic count increases?
Changes to the general plan, you mean?
Just overall changes that, that can be to a certain level. And which ones are going to be considered, even if they're mitigated to a certain point, they're still beyond the thresholds that have been established. And I'm not sure what those, we'll, we'll be figuring out what those thresholds are.
Okay.
Right, so then there's going to be overriding considerations. And that's where you break into an EIR versus an MND or mitigating all those, those components to something lesser than an EIR. So there will be, we're anticipating, and this is really what you see with any general plan, is overriding considerations. Not sure what those are going to look like at this point. And certainly during the scoping, when they have the scoping, that, that'll be something discussed as well with RenCon.
Or maybe we don't have overriding considerations, maybe we properly mitigate. Or we go with the alternative that makes the most sense. But on the EIR, I mean, we are going to have the whole climate, climate change factor to evaluate. And that's definitely going to roll over into the EIR.
It's funny that you say that, because I talked to, I had a conversation with the consultant this afternoon just to kind of understand where, where they're coming from, from a timeline standpoint, when we're, when we're going to be really kind of kicking off this, this, this general plan update. And we talked about climate change and how that is, that's certainly at the forefront for discussion as well.
And I just have one more comment on that, or just a request. Because I've been, I've been involved with the, the county effort on their general plan and, and they just distributed the EIR, which by the way, the, the deadline for comments on their draft EIR are the end of February, I forget the exact date.
Want to say it's like the twenty, I, the city received information.
But the county, this is a warning, or that's maybe too strong a word, but it's a, it's a comment, it's a heads up to the, to RenCon Consulting. Because the county has really made a serious mistake on, on dealing with the climate change. They, they did not do a proper emissions inventory that could have been built from the ground up and should have been built from the ground up. They took some models that were used by the utility companies, which only look at certain things. And one problem that's emerged, although the county's trying desperately not to recognize it, is that they have not included any kind of methane leakage or methane emission sources from their landfill, from, you know, everything else, because the utilities are not concerned with that. So it's a complete omission in their emission inventory. And there, if, if there's cooperation with APCD and possibly even bringing in expertise from UCLA or Caltech, there are people that could very easily help them do a correct emissions inventory, because you can't, you can't, if you don't have a proper baseline, then you can't, you cannot accurately measure whether your mitigations are doing anything. And everything has to be measurable, and it has to be a baseline that's, that's including all, all of our sources. So just please, I don't want this to be a cut-and-paste EIR, I will be very disappointed, very unhappy.
You can't measure it unless, you can't manage it unless you measure it.
Exactly, we can't figure out whether we're going to be making any progress at all. And the tendency on this thing is, you know, the, these consulting firms, they have planners on staff and they do have been doing things a certain way, and this is a new area of analysis that's being required. And so I just ask that, that everybody be very, very thorough and thoughtful about this and not just, you know, pull out the scissors and paste and, you know, mishmash, mishmash it through, so that's all.
Duly noted.
Thanks.
Quick comment, I too have been part of the, you know, public review on the Ventura County general plan, and I wanted to say thank you, Kathy, and I agree with what she's saying.
I, I had just a couple more questions against the, the staff report right now. I, I'll have others about the, the. I, I'll have others about the, the contract later, but I don't want to get into that tonight. I appreciated the reference to the, to the general plan guidelines. I didn't print them out to read them. Because it's four hundred odd pages. And it's a, it's a good way, if you have insomnia, to, to cure that.
Those guidelines haven't been updated in twenty-something years, so it's, it's a welcome revision to, to something that was severely outdated.
So, the guidelines need an update as well?
No.
Oh.
The guidelines themselves have been recently updated.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
They hadn't been updated in twenty-something years.
Hadn't been. Okay. Yeah.
They have been.
I thought it had a newer date on it.
Yes.
In, in page three of four in the staff report, California's Planning Priorities, it talks about protecting the environment, strengthening the economy, all the good stuff. Including in urban, suburban, and rural communities. Which is, Ojai is not urban, but is it suburban or rural? I mean, there, there must, it's listed here. There's got to be a definition somewhere, I presume in the state code somewhere. And, and generally, how are the guidelines different for rural and suburban? So that we know what we might have to be aiming for?
Can I just give a quick, and definitely staff will be the ones to give you the definitive answer. But I think at one point in time, Ojai was considered rural. But recently, I know, and this had to do, I think, even with the ATP grant that Public Works applied for and some other funding, we're now considered urban because we're linked with the city of Ventura.
And the ci- oh, and the city of Oxnard.
Yeah, and I know I'm, I'm not describing this in detail, but essentially, they base it on kind of the continuity of, of housing and a certain percent of housing. So, there's not a big enough gaff between Ojai and Ventura to separate us out. So, we're included in that massive-
Yeah, I know I've-
Area. Somebody, there's a better definition, but it's generally what I'm saying.
I've wrestled with that question. I've, I've actually looked into it from an environmental standpoint to understand because there are references within exemptions regarding urbanized versus rural. And I believe that there is a definition within the, the parameters of the exemption that defines urbanized. I, I can't remember the, the density requirements, but certainly we can, that, that information will be-
Commissioner Nolan is certainly right about that. I recall a case within the last couple of years where there was some sort of standard, I don't want to, I don't want to say standard metropolitan statistical area because that's a different measure. But there was some kind of measure that lumped Oxnard, the city of Oxnard, the city of Ventura, and the entire Ojai Valley, including the city of Ojai, into one-
Right, urban area.
Pot of porridge.
Yeah.
Had to do with the housing between, like, say where Ventura stops, you know, it becomes more sparse. But there was enough population to not separate us to be rural.
So many residents per square mile or something like that.
Exceeded that by a certain amount in the valley.
There's this little, there's this little tiny thread that leads from Ventura. Of course, you can't tell Ventura from Oxnard unless you see the city limit signs.
But leaving it on the-
But, but there's this little thread that runs up Highway thirty-three, basically.
Right.
And takes in Casita Springs and then Oak View and then Miramonte and then Ojai, or Miners Oaks, whatever. So that, so there aren't, there aren't the big empty spaces, and I guess that's why we're there. But I think it's important for us to understand what the, since they list urban, suburban, and rural, it's important for us to understand what we are. And, and how the guidelines are different, so we know what guidelines in this four hundred-page document we should be aiming at as we do this update.
Right. Okay. That's a good question.
Terrific. I'm sorry, we, we certainly put a big pause in your, in your presentation.
Wrong question two.
Well, there's only three slides, so we're doing okay.
Just so you know, there's four.
Oh, there's four slides?
Four, okay.
We're fifty percent. We're okay.
What is a general plan?
All right, so let's move on to the, the third question, which is fairly, I mean, extremely important. How can the community get involved? And as I started peeling back the layers for involvement for not only the community, but also for this, for this commission, which will lead into our, our final question. There are nine different points of either stakeholder interviews, community workshops, pop-up workshops, planning commission study session.
You're saying this is in the scope of work? Yeah, right.
City council study session. And then there'll be a, a public workshop on the draft general plan. And then there's obviously the, the lot, last two pieces, which is the planning commission's recommendation regarding the general plan as well as the, the draft EIR. And then city council hearing, both public hearings requiring proper notification. Though, that's really the meat of what we're talking about here. Getting, getting information from the community and doing it in a bunch of different ways. Even a charrette, if you will, that will, I mean, each of these, each of these pieces, I remember the, the, the way in which, when I was an intern, learning about the different ways to get out to the public was just simply, yeah, let's just hold a public, a public meeting and let's see who shows up, and what we were finding is that the, the numbers were extremely low. And-
And the attendants were extremely repetitive.
Correct. So, it was the same individuals, right? Or groups that were attending? So, how do you go out and, how do you hear from that population that may not be able to come to a public hearing?
You offer food.
Food is definitely one of them, so that'll, that'll be at these, at these events. It's interesting, pop-up workshops get a lot of feedback. And the reason why is because you're going to the community where they're already at. And it's a community that may not necessarily be, have the time or the resources to come to an event like this. Maybe they've got children or there's something going on that's beyond the, the scope that would allow them to attend a meeting like this.
So, pop-up, you mean?
So, pop-up.
Group of planning commissioners show up at an intersection?
No, I'm talking like, there's a soccer, there's a soccer game or a baseball game or a softball game or a volleyball game or a football game. And they attend those public, those public engagements.
Well, we have an idea.
They put a tent up. Go ahead. At a table.
Ryan, our co-presenting at the moment. So, you're, you know, talking about how do you engage the public and possibly do a pop-up? Well, one of the big events that we have coming up in April is Earth Day, and it's in Libby Park. And yes, you do have tourists that come, but usually have a pretty good cross-section of the community. Sometimes people show up just to take their kids onto the playground and they're not even there for Earth Day. So, you generally get a, a pretty good mix and-
Of a several hundred people.
Right. And actually, even more than that. So, we happen to be kind of affiliated with-
I'll just say it, we're on the board of the Green Coalition now. And the Green Co- and the Green Coalition produces Green Day. So, in our Earth Day planning yesterday, an idea came up that, what if there was part of Earth Day where, where-
There could be like a, a work, public workshop, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to-
A charrette or-
Find their name again. Ramey?
Right. Ramey and Associates.
Yeah, where Ramey and Associates would actually be there as one of their workshops at Earth Day with this cross-section of people that normally wouldn't go out at night or couldn't during the day. And you have a built-in audience. Now, they would have to facilitate in a way, knowing that people are going to come and go and like that. But certainly, in, in terms of getting input and information and asking questions.
Getting comments you wouldn't get otherwise.
Yeah, it might be a really good forum for that.
Yeah, I was, I mean, those are the types of events that we need to be aware of that-
Right.
Well, that's it.
Make good logical sense.
I think it's a real good one.
That's on April eighteenth.
Yeah, and that's a Saturday.
Saturday, April eighteenth, from eleven to four.
On or near the twenty-first.
And right at Libby Park.
I mean, my other example that I was thinking of is the farmer's market. Why not have some-
Oh, that's a great idea.
-involvement with that as well, so.
Yeah.
It was one of the examples that I was thinking of.
That's, that's an excellent idea.
The earth, that, that's a really-
Gets you a diverse crowd either way.
The farmer's market is the big social event of the week. So, it's good.
Anyway, we'll, we'll work, we'll work through that as we're, as we're looking at this. So, yeah, there's lots of different opportunities for the public to get involved. Whether or not they realize that it's even going on, I mean, they, they may have no idea, which, believe it or not, there are people that have no idea that a general plan even exists. Live and breathe it, so obviously.
Oh, we believe it.
With, with, with the Earth Day opportunity, we have the opportunity for more press and promotion. The Ojai Valley News does a special insert for Earth Day. This could specifically be mentioned potentially in that.
Right. Okay.
Good idea.
Yep. Okay. Moving on to slide. Now, remember, if, if, if there are any questions regarding any of these slides that have a lot of information on, we can always go back to these slides.
Well, I, I, I do, I, I, I want to go back to the last slide for a moment. And, and it has to do with putting, putting bodies in the chairs at our meetings. And if there was some way for, for either more often or more saturated notifications, so people know when the planning commission is speaking about the general plan and we can have people hear. I'm not sure how to do that.
We can talk to, to Ramey and Associates and see what strategies they use.
I think probably door prizes are out of the question.
Well, what, what's one thing that brings people together? Food?
Food.
You mentioned that. I mean, that, that's something that is worth looking into.
This has been a pretty low-budget operation here, this planning commission.
We, oh, yeah. You know, I was just going to mention-
We don't even get coffee in the coffee machine.
No, we don't. Yeah, we don't get cookies or anything.
Council gets cookies.
I just wanted to mention, this last year, the county actually put on the workshop for the Caltrans grant. It was that multimodal grant from Casita Springs up to Miramonte. And it was held in Oak View, and they had a series of three different workshops. And I went, I attended them all. And it was interesting, they had, they served food there because it was kind of at, it was at dinnertime. And I'm sitting with all these people, and a lot of people showed up and said, we came because it was like right after dinner and we could eat while we were here. And it, it was a big motivator, and they wanted to be there, but it was the combination of the two. And I've been at other events too.
You didn't have to do it instead of dinner.
Right. And some people even brought their kids, and the kids just played in the corner. But it allowed people that normally wouldn't come to show up.
I've, I've been to some of these charrettes that, that have taken place in-
Yeah.
Cities of, of my past, and we've provided daycare or some sort of a- I'm not saying that that's something that's built into the program of-
Right.
Because it's not.
But it helps.
It would be something outside of, of what Ramey and Associates-
This is, this is not necessarily the facility where we'd want to do that, but we have-
Like chaparral.
A chaparral auditorium.
Right.
That would, that would fit nicely.
And they just had like pizza and, you know, waters and cokes. And then one night they actually had like salads and sandwiches. But it was interesting to hear people commenting because we're all sitting down eating before it officially started. And people were chiding in and saying, you know, if, if I wouldn't have dinner, I, I probably wouldn't have come. But this is great. I just came straight from work, had dinner, or I could bring my kids, and the kids ate too. But it's interesting what brings people out, so.
All right.
Next slide.
Slide four.
Slide four.
So, the last slide I have here is the role of this commission. So, the, the role of the planning commission, I think that's something that's been brought up a couple different times as it, as it, as it pertains to the general plan update itself. The planning commission, the way, I think the way staff is seeing it and certainly the way in which it's been built into this program, will take part and provide input regarding the general plan update impacting each of the general plan elements. I, I want to stress that. It's, I mean, while certainly there is this, this focus on specific elements and really diving into the detail, each of these elements will be touched. Whether it's just a broad stroke in terms of lips, for lack of a better term, lipstick and makeup, right, in terms of, of making the document consistent from end to end. I think that's probably the be- the better way to, to put it. And then there'll be a deeper dive into some of these elements that really need to have it kind of shaken out and then reevaluated. And then the goals and objectives and, and the policies either revised or even refined, if you will.
And staff will determine that, or Ramey and Associates will determine that? Which of those elements the planning commission needs to take into account?
Well, Ramey and Associates is really focusing on, on specific elements, but they are doing updates to the entire general plan. I think we need to make sure that that's out there and understood. There are elements that, for lack of a better term, are receiving a light dusting versus the deeper dive that you'll be seeing, certainly with like the land use element and the circulation element for certain.
Yeah, I, I note that your administrative report says general plan and, and housing element.
The housing element as well, I'm sorry. That, that's a good point. The housing element, well, for obvious reasons, we're mandated to update it every eight years. It just happens to fall within that fifth to sixth cycle, which is, which is ideal. I've even seen cities that have already done their housing element update without even having the RENA numbers because they're just going back in and doing a slight adjustment to those RENA numbers. So, it's not ideal, but if they're doing a general plan update, why not include the housing element? We're just in an, in kind of a sweet spot right now in terms of having all this done at the same time.
Well, there are things like land use, circulation, and open space for sure that, that the planning commissioners would be interested in.
Certainly.
Some of the others maybe less so, like noise.
But we will be reviewing all the elements, right? Because I thought state law required the planning commission to review.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I mean, there may be, we may want, and, and that actually brings up the idea of, we, will we have the opportunity to bring in, like, the director of public works? When we have the transportation element? What about the climate crisis committee? Are we going to have an opportunity to coordinate with them? And a further point on that is, I actually think that's very critical to, to consult with them and get their take on how to handle the climate change. Because, you know, sticking it somewhere, it was in here, we're going to put it in the safety element. But I'm not sure that's going to be really completely adequate because it really goes beyond safety. And then it come, become, so what the county did, which turned out to be a really bad idea, they did cross-cutting policies. And they put climate change-related policies in all elements, and they identified them with a special icon. But the problem is then, the downside of doing that is that they're all separated and you, they're never in one cohesive place. And so, they had various task forces. I mean, it's, you know, they operated differently than we're going to, but they had task forces that were all like focused on ag or focused on water. And none of those people were really thinking about climate change. And so, it, the whole topic got really dismissed. And so, I'm just, I'm thinking that bringing in the climate crisis committee to talk about how to fit in the evaluation or the discussion and analysis and policy development for climate change, how best to really incorporate this into this effort?
So, just, you're, you're talking about bringing in them to the level of, of having a, an open conversation with them? Maybe them giving some sort of a presentation like this?
Presentation to the planning commission, something, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, the workshop that they did, at the end of that, you stayed the whole time, right? Yeah, I mean, it got a little crazy for a while, but, um, but in the, I think the end result was that there were actually some pretty interesting viable ideas talked about. That they're, you know, and they've got to be the, um, the curator of these ideas and come back and see what, what seems.
Well, we're, and we're facing a, a similar kind of question with this environmental justice stuff. Assuming we can figure out what that means.
Right.
But do we put it in one cohesive place?
Right.
Or sprinkle it throughout, which.
Yeah.
It'll evolve probably as we move through this process.
I'd, I'd certainly like to see these things in one place.
I mean, those are the things that, that I've been toying with in, in my head. And, and certainly I think during the, the kickoff that we have with, with Remy and Associates, I think some of that stuff will, will start to be further discussed and.
Might be a subset of some of the visioning or something.
It could be. I don't even know if that's necessarily something that Remy would need to be involved in. It's something that we do, um, in-house.
Should be guidance to them.
And then provide them with the necessary flow. So, and that wouldn't, that wouldn't, see, and we're trying, I, I need to be, we need to be clear that we do have a budget and we're trying to stay within the confines of that budget. So, if there are things that, that we can take off of their plate or just assume and then bring them back results, I think that, that potentially works in our favor.
Climate mobilization committee.
Just making sure, yeah, making sure that it's not.
Yeah, utilize the, the, um, resources that we have here within the city.
Right. Well, I was gonna look to Joe, but I'm not.
He's not looking up.
If, if we be, if, if we can.
I, I just want to make sure that the, the. Yeah, right? Yeah, I mean, we can, yeah, certainly we can do, we can do something to the level of, of even the director coming from public.
I presume that Remy has, has the experience to say, "These are the best ways to get people from different parts of the community to actually come make contributions to."
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of the nice thing about.
Installation of thought.
Yeah, about having a consultant come in and, and kind of provide some guidance there. We could sit here and spin our wheels in terms of trying to find, you know, find bodies that'll sit in these chairs, right? Butts in seats. But they've probably already got some sort of performer that they've used in the past that is, that they've found more success in. I mean, even some of the stuff that I was talking about previous to, to this slide.
Like you said, food.
Those, well, food is, yeah, well, they've, they've found that ninety percent of the time, yeah, I, I don't know the statistics, but. Even these, these pop-up meetings, I, I had no idea the impact that they would have, but they, they're highly impactful because it's reaching that, it's going to the community versus saying, "Hey, come to this." They're going to them, which is.
And I think it's maybe more, um, us, the city, staff, city council, the planning commissioners or whoever's weighing in, providing the consultant with potential places where they could pop up.
Yeah.
Having that we live in the community and we've been part of it. I mean, they don't necessarily have to use them, but I would think if I was the consultant, I would appreciate us or you, staff, saying, "Oh, well, we're going to have Earth Day in April and we have the farmer's market every Sunday and there's a good cross-sector of the community and here's a couple of other places where you might consider."
And they're one, I mean, they're relying on, on us as the experts of, of, of our community, so. Well, you as the experts of the community.
We know the data source is better than they do.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I have a question. So, are you a staff, the mediator between the Planning Commission and Remy and Associates? Or is Remy a so, are, are representatives from Remy going to come to Planning Commission for us to ask direct questions of them?
It's, yeah, it's both. The, they will be here, but not to the level that I'm here, right? Um, they have, they have contractual obligations to be here and certainly they want to, they want to get that feedback, so.
Okay.
Do you, do you plan then, since, since this one says general plan and housing element, do you, do you plan to have this topic with maybe a different element identified as a piece of every one of our meetings for a while now?
Oh, you're talking about breaking up each of the elements?
Yeah. Well, I, you said general plan and housing element, housing element's part of the general plan. So, I thought maybe you were calling it out as something that would be of particular emphasis this evening and that the next time we have a meeting on the same general topic, it might say general plan.
Yeah, the housing element's kind of.
Circulation element.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting element in, in that it, it mandates updates.
Right.
And then if the city or jurisdiction chooses not to do that, then they are subject to violations. And now the state's even hammer, coming down with the hammer on, on.
On money?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay.
The, that's really kind of why I identified it as kind of a separate piece because while it lives within and breathes within the general plan itself, it has other obligations which are foreign to what these other elements are, so.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's interesting too because with the housing element, I want to say on a, on a weekly basis, I keep getting updates on what's going on and with RENA and HCD and how the state's been interpreting, um, different, um, assembly bills and state bills that have, have come down. So, it, I'm, I'm constantly getting information and updates on the housing element. If we wanted to have a discussion, a broader discussion on that and start off with that, um, from an, uh, an element standpoint, that one is the one that's the freshest in my mind and would probably be a great, a great one to.
Well, it might be useful if each member of the commission read the housing element and then we can take part of a meeting and talk about that.
Yeah.
And how do we think that ought, that ought to be reconsidered, if you will?
Yeah, so I've, I've looked at the housing element. I'll, I'll have to admit I have not read it cover to cover, but that will be something that I will be doing certainly through this process. Uh, and, and in doing that, I think it'll give us an understanding of what works, what doesn't work, what I've been seeing as being successful and, and kind of building off of that, so, yeah.
And we're, we're not talking about standard television fare here where all the problems get solved in one hour.
Yeah, and this is a standing.
But it's something, it's, this is a, this is a, yeah, this is a mini-series at least.
Look, look at it as, as a, this is a marathon and not a sprint, right? So, just remember that there, there will be times where there is nothing for me to, as the staff to this commission, to update you on. And there will be times where I'm, I'm saying, "Look, we've got a lot going on here. Just understand that these events are taking place, get the word out." Like, that's the type of, of scenario that I'm seeing for this.
But I'm thinking there should be times as well when you are asking the Planning Commission members to say, "All right, we're looking at this element here. What, what do you find good and what do you find bad about it? Tell us so that, that can become part of what we consider as we do the update."
That, I mean, that could be, I could see that as well. It's, I think once we get into it, I think that'll.
I'm trying to answer the question that's on the screen right now. What's our role?
I mean.
Do we talk to you about what we like and don't like? Or do we make up our own pop-up workshops or?
I don't want you to think that the confines of your impact on this general plan is in this room. I want to make sure that you, that you have that and understand as a resident, you have that resource to go out and be a part of each of these, these public forums really, uh, and workshops, if you will. So, while I, I certainly value and look forward to those discussions at this forum, don't let this be the only platform that you, that you heard, so.
Okay.
And that's kind of what I wanted to get out, that your role as a Planning Commission members is, is beyond even this. Like, we're, we're having this, this conversation and certainly we'll be getting into the weeds and certainly down some rabbit holes here and there, and I look forward to that. But don't let this be the only platform, please.
Okay, terrific.
Um, so I, I just wanted to say, um, I really liked the, it's, I think it is in the, the scope of work there. Remy will be doing a zoning consistency analysis. So, I just wanted to say, yeah, that sounds good.
Zoning consistence analysis, which is really kind of in line with the Title X cleanup discussion that, that has been going on even before I started here, so.
I mean, that'll be a helpful guide for us to.
Absolutely.
Figure out how we, what we need to do in the future.
Absolutely. I, council recognized that and that is an item that wasn't in the, in the budget initially. It was an added item, it was an additional item.
Um, and, um, what are, what about the optional tasks? I mean, those are all not in the current scope of work, but, and clearly it's up to council to decide.
Thank you.
If anything gets added.
It is.
Um, but do we have a, are you, would it be helpful for us to weigh in on any of this at all? Or is that just pretty much council?
I, I would leave that to, to council.
Okay.
At this point, yes.
Okay.
I, I would suggest maybe that, uh, at a council meeting, you could talk about one or another of those things and say, "Yes, I'm a Planning Commissioner, but I also live here."
Yeah, right.
And I think it's important that we do X.
Yeah, yeah, good idea, yeah.
And Y is the reason, right? So, it's X, but then this is the reason.
Right, yeah. Okay, shall we move on to the informational items then?
Well, I, I'm wondering if you want a suggestion for another pop-up idea or I should wait?
Great.
Oh, you're talking a pop-up tent type of?
No, just in a location for a community gathering that Remy and Associates could do.
I'm listening.
I'm just wondering if the, if Alex over at the Ojai Valley Inn would sponsor something like an open house and sponsor it and the community goes there and maybe they provide the food.
Uh, I can reach out to them.
Yeah. I'm going.
But I know a lot of community doesn't always go to the Ojai Valley Inn. Um, but it would be a way to get the community there, similar to what they do during Christmas and they, when they have community events there.
Yeah.
Might be a part of the inn's marketing program.
What's, yeah, I mean, what's the worst that they could say? No, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Fair.
Well, I also thought your idea of, of the football game is a good, I mean, they get a big, pretty big crowd for those football games, don't they, at the high school?
That was my suggestion, I think.
That was, oh.
I'm sorry, I, I thought, I, I went directly to sports and I was like, "Oh, there's entertainment stuff as well."
Actually, that's a real excellent, excellent idea. Because a lot of times those people are not the same people that go to Earth Day or.
Right.
Yeah.
Farmer's Market, it's their different crowds.
Yeah.
So, that's, you're going to get a lot of families there.
Football game itself might be a little more of a challenge.
Yeah.
But even so, you could do man on the street kind of things at those for sure.
Yeah, right next to the convenience, yeah, the concession stands.
That was smart, actually.
All right.
Okay. A lot of good ideas kicking around here. Item four is director decisions. Do we have anything that, uh, that pops up as something that, that, uh, strikes your fancy? I noticed on the first one, the, the, uh, the first tree permit there says, "No permit required." And this is because it's all.
Yeah, it's the twenty, it's the.
The first two.
What, you're talking, remove a, a small tree with intent.
The first two items in, in, under tree permits, there says, "No permit required." Is that because of who the applicant is or what the scope of work is?
Yeah, it's the scope, it's, it's the scope of work. So, it, it, it's that twenty-five percent rule is really what it comes down to. So, they're staying, that's what we try to do with.
I see the reference there, I didn't remember what it was.
With any of these is we try to keep them within that twenty-five percent rule, which, which makes it, obviously it, it's better for the tree. It's better for, from a processing standpoint, and they're doing it over time, so.
So, the arborist supervision doesn't have anything to do with the no permit required?
No, you would still have, you would still have arborist, um, supervision on those. That's, that's how they, that's, that's the parameter that allows for them for the next permit.
But these are numbered tree permits and then it says, "No permit required."
Right.
People came in thinking they might need a tree permit and it turns out they don't, is that what we're saying?
That happens. That, that's happened.
Okay.
Yep.
It is, um, is.
Like it, what was the, I'm sorry, just, just as an example of one who submitted a, a tree permit and I think it was a, a, a tree permit that they were deeming to be hazardous and they wanted to remove the tree. Well, we ended up sitting down and having that conversation with them and really kind of getting down to the nuts and bolts of what their, their larger vision, vision was. And ended up working it out where they ended up staying within that twenty-five percent for trimming and pruning, um, as opposed to just flat out removing the tree. Because there were other solutions.
Very good.
I love that you, yeah.
And that code, and that code section that we say, it says, "If pruning work is going to be performed by an ISA arborist or under the direction, the direct field supervision of the ISA certified arborist, no arborist report shall be necessary and permit fees shall be waived."
All right.
So, they just, they report it to us.
So, it's.
An application, but they don't need the arborist's report.
And it's something that we keep as a matter of, of record as well within each of the.
Sure.
Well, then you can, it helps in managing our urban forest because you've got the data now of like, you know, how many trees came out or they're being pruned or they're stressed or diseased or what have you. So, I think that's good.
It's good data.
I agree with you, yeah.
I agree.
This is kind of along the lines of, in past, in the past, we've talked about administrative permits versus CUPs and minor CUPs and that sort of thing. I, I like the idea in general of when people need to do something or want to do something, that they should come in and talk to staff about it. Whether it turns out that they have to submit an application and pay a fee or not, it's, it's a good way to make sure that people in general understand what the rules are, which they may not because most of them never read the code. And it's understandable that they don't.
So, so with the tree, uh, a sycamore or heritage tree or whatever, mature tree, they, they, even if they're going to have an art, a lot, an ar, a certified arborist on site and they're doing twenty-five percent, they still need to come in and report it to you?
The, the, the rest of that section says, "However, the certified arborist shall be required to complete and submit a permit application with proof of their certification and state whether there's active birds."
So, they, they need to come in?
So, you could, you could almost call it a no fee.
Which is why we got this little email about no nests.
Yes. Yeah, so that, I didn't mention that actually during the, the second item, but this was, this is in addition to and this is being provided as a part of the record.
Yeah, I was glad to see that.
Yeah.
Drip lines and nests we have to worry about.
Yep.
Okay, any others along those lines? I, uh.
So, I, Isakaya and Magic Hour, they're all in that. They're both on the same parcel, yeah. Isaacaya is, Isakaya is behind, Isakaya is where Hip Cafe was and Magic Hour Tea is in front of them on the street.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, where, where is this then? I was thinking of that one that says, "Live to Eat" out there. Um, the, that used to be a Chinese restaurant across from the Thai restaurant. So, where is this nine twenty-eight?
Uh, sorry?
It's almost, across from, almost directly across from Bryant, with the Bryant Intersect, High Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's that kind of intersection right there or on the north side of the street.
There's two, there's two restaurants on the one side then?
Well, it's not a restaurant. Magic Hours is, um, is Gina's Tea House and, and retail store. And then right behind it on the same parcel is the restaurant. Yeah, no, they're not.
What's, I'm looking at the second page of director decisions and sometimes it says A and a date and other times it says Director A and a date. Oh, those are director exemptions, okay, yeah, all right. Director approved, okay.
Unless we invite him to the leadership.
No, no, no.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for staff on item four? If not, let's move on to item five, future agenda items. Ah, comprehensive sign program for the new, how many, how many different? Ah, comprehensive sign program for the new, how many, how many different, uh, businesses are going to be in there? It looks to me like there's space for three or four at 334 East Ojai Avenue.
There's, yeah, it's A, B, and C, right?
The three businesses. That's right, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so there's the two items, the comprehensive sign program, and then the proposed roof deck alteration to the single-family residence. Just, I mean, walking distance, you could sneeze and hit it from here, so it's, it's extremely close to, to City Hall. I encourage you to go look at that, that site as well.
Is that, is that this, this, oh, 309 South Signal? Okay. I was thinking of Ventura, because there's.
Just right around the corner.
Yep, you turn, I think it's the second house, as you start going down the, on the left-hand side.
We will have to look at it, yeah. All right, Title X cleanup and a bunch of other places.
I just wanted to, I know it's, we'll be discussing it later on, um, the Title X cleanup will be including some, some more focused discussions regarding the use chart. Uh, Chair Quelsey has been working diligently on and provided some revisions to, to it, to give it that format that we were talking about previous, so.
A landscape chart that has, that has all the zones. Uh, but there's still some inconsistencies in the, in the definitions and...
Yeah.
Or, or the names of land uses, let's call it.
So, I think that'll, that, certainly that's something I think that needs to be, uh, discussed sooner rather than later, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. Oh, fences, hedges, and walls. This is one, like, like you were talking about before, Commissioner Lottis, where I, I once went through and did an electronic scan of the code, looking for occurrences of fence, hedge, or wall. And there were about, there were nearly fifty different places in the municipal code where one or another, or, or more than one of those words occurred, and only about half of them were in Title X. They're just scattered throughout, and so if someone wants to build a fence or a wall, or wants to know, "Is this row of bushes out in my front yard a hedge or not?" It becomes very difficult to figure out. You have to search very diligently through the municipal code to get all the context.
So, that needs to be aggregated in one place?
Well, ideally, you could at least find all those things without having to do an electronic scan of the whole code, yes. I, I don't, I, I would hesitate, without more discussion, to say it all ought to be in one article of one chapter, or one chapter of one title.
But footnotes, maybe footnotes referring to another.
Some of those things ought to be aggregated, for sure.
Yeah, and just, just to, the, it was tentatively scheduled for a city council hearing, and that was, that was scheduled for the 28th. Ended up getting pushed. We're, we're, we're working on some revisions to that, to that code, so, um, it was put on here for the 28th, and it was anticipated to go on the 28th, but it ended up getting pushed.
I, I don't know how, how they can stand going, yeah, going to midnight every city council meeting is just.
I, I don't have a date in mind. I know that we are working through it. I've been looking at it specifically, so.
Would you, would you flag the commission when you, when it's going to be, well, I guess it'll show up here, right?
It will, and we can discuss it then. Sure.
All right, well, let's go on to item seven then. Ooh, says item six, oh, committee reports. Committee reports first, excuse me. Item six. All right, um, Commissioner Nolan, you have the most recent city council meeting? No.
Well.
Yeah, it's only the fifth, right, yeah.
I actually, I accidentally went to the one before. I'm, I don't know if I saw Kathy and Kathy or whatever, but I went to Kathy Lottis's, and then I did the report last time. And I did, in fact, go to the one on the 14th. I, I did miss the first hour, but then I showed up for the rest of it. And I apologize, but I thought I was gonna go home tonight, and I didn't, to go pick up the, the notes. So, I only can remember a few things, and I'm willing to read it at the next one.
And the 14th and the 28th?
Yes. Um, but what I'm saying tonight is I was negligent, and, um, I've been here since Complete Streets in town, and I didn't go back home to get the notes, so.
Why don't we do it next time?
Oh, thank you. I feel very much relieved, the pressure. But I could go on to the Complete Streets.
Yes.
Um, we actually met today, and, um, we, basically what we reviewed was, um, let me step back. We've been working on safe routes to schools and parks. Um, specifically, the one we've been concentrating in on is from Topa Topa Elementary to Ojai Avenue, and then how do people, anyone can use these routes, but we're, it's part of a safe route system. Getting from the north side of Ojai Avenue to the south side and vice versa. So, we concentrated on the intersection of Drown and Fulton and Ojai Avenue as it pertains to the ATP grant, which is going to be on the city council agenda Tuesday night. And they're gonna be looking at a 35% completion review. So, um, so basically, that was our entire topic today. But along those lines, and I'm hoping this is the appropriate time for me to ask, um, and I did, Commissioner Quelsey and I met with, um, Joe Fiss after our meeting today. I would like to, um, agendize this, um, safe routes interface with the ATP grant, safety features or measures that we're proposing, be reviewed with Planning Commission, with the goal of the Planning Commission reviewing it and either, you know, making comments and what have you, and hopefully forwarding that to city council for consideration as they, um, move forward with the ATP grant. I hope that wasn't too wordy. But, um, so I, I'm making a request tonight if we could agend, agendize that item. Hopefully in two weeks. It would, wouldn't necessarily have to take a lot of time.
As a public hearing item? Is that what we're thinking here?
Yeah, but it'd be a discussion item is what we had said.
If we do it as a discussion item, then the notification would be...
Or maybe Joe could comment on that. We met with him.
Joe, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, it would be appropriate to do it as a, um, discussion item with a recommendation to, uh, to the city council.
Okay.
Would it be possible to, part of the, we apologize for the, um, the timeframe. It's always, like, we do something at Complete Streets, and then I've got Planning Commission that night, or I'm waiting, and then the next, you know, five days later is city council. So, trying to, like, organize and get information at the proper time is critical.
Right. So, I think my, my, my one question, which may lead into more, more questions, is the, the document itself, um, is that something that I can get my hands on?
Yes, as a matter of fact, um, hopefully tomorrow I can send you PDFs of the document. And so, basically, this is just conceptual ideas that we would like to share. I mean, ultimately, of course, we'd like them to be included in the grant, but, um, a consideration that they be reviewed and, and potentially, if possible, incorporated into the ATP project, or if not, in that grant at a future time, and we have it all, um, fairly well organized and self-explanatory.
Okay.
But.
I, I think that's key, is knowing what the recommendation is.
Oh, yeah. It'll be, it's on there.
What, what the committee is recommending to the commission
Right.
to then recommend to the council.
So, both.
Yeah, go ahead.
Both, um, Commissioner Nolan and Chair Quelsey, you're both on.
Yes.
I know you've been inviting me to those, but.
I know, it's, it's okay.
I will eventually be to one of those and then start attending.
Or you could just even pop in, if you wanted to.
Just to say hi. Usually ends up being 45 minutes, so I stop in to say hi.
There's food.
Hold on a second.
There is food, you know. I shouldn't have said that.
There, there have been candy bars on occasion on the table.
That's true. There was a bowl of little mini, mini bars one night.
Well, that, that could very well.
But potentially, we, the two of us could present it, um,
Okay.
to the, or, or, you know, whatever you think is appropriate.
Yeah.
But we could do that, Steve.
There's other members on that, the, on, on this, um, it's an ad hoc, correct?
It's standing.
It's a standing committee of this commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, so it's a Brown Act body, and all the meetings are noticed.
Okay.
And agendas are published and all of that.
So, we are the two planning commissioners that are, um, on the meeting, or, um, chairing, co-chairing. Um, and then, um, Souza Francina, city council member Souza Francina. In the past, we've had other.
Frequent attendee.
She's a frequent attendee. Then we've, you know, in the past, we have other city council members. We have also a member of the Building Appeals Board who attends regularly, and then everybody else are members of the public and partake, and, um, Greg Grant actually used to meet with us regularly, but we know he's busy, so he hasn't been. But occasionally, like, last month, he came in and we co, um, we had a workshop together with, um, our Public Works Director.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe just briefly, uh, for the folks out there in television land, if there are in fact any.
Actually, there are.
The, the ATP or Active Transportation Program, I think it is, is a grant that's more than a couple million dollars to the city for design and upgrade of pedestrian and bicycle-oriented facilities along the two state highways within the city limits. So, 33 Maricopa Highway and 150 Ojai Avenue within the city limits.
Okay.
Tree planting also is included in that grant.
Tree planting, various things, curb bumpouts and, and.
Yeah, but predominantly bike, pedestrian, and tree planting were the kind of key elements of the grant.
But this particular element has, has been something that, that the Complete Streets Committee, which is focused on, again, pedestrian and bicycle, as well as vehicle traffic on all the streets in the city. The committee is looking at now, as, as Commissioner Nolan said, safe routes to school and parks.
Okay.
Well, the biggest barrier for people on one side of the city, we'll call it, the south side of the city, to get to the north side of the city, and because Topa Topa is the only elementary school inside the city limits. There are kids that need to go from the south side to the north side. And so, what we have discussed in today's meeting and, and hope to take a look at, maybe in a, not next Tuesday's city council meeting, but maybe the following one, is a place where the safe routes to school, which in this case is mostly north-south traffic, intersects the ATP, which along Ojai Avenue is all east-west traffic. So, there's a place where, where the two interests.
Intersect.
Intersect.
Right.
And in this case, it's where Drown Avenue almost matches up with South Fulton. South Fulton doesn't match up very well with North Fulton, but, but there's a, sort of a wide intersection at Drown and South Fulton that, that the committee envisions as being a potential major thoroughfare for, for young people to get from the south side of the city up to Topa Topa Elementary. Whether it's walking or bicycling, there's been a lot of emphasis on bicycle traffic.
It's both.
We would like to, to encourage that, but that's what we're talking about here. Is dealing with that intersection and, and incorporating it into the consideration of the ATP design, because this major north-south route that we're envisioning for kids crosses the territory that the ATP is all about.
Okay. I look forward to that conversation.
I was just gonna mention, in turn, we've actually, um, walked from like, or, and rode our bikes, from, um, Topa Topa Elementary to this location with, um, our city manager and our Public Works Director. So, we've all been out in the field, so to speak, assessing where.
Boots on the street, if you will.
Yeah, where, where would be the ideal place for this crossing to occur? And of course, we're targeting, um, you know, schoolchildren, but anyone can use it.
Sure.
So, it's, it's a real good safety measure.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that report.
And you as well.
I think we're.
Um, I do want to mention, February 11th, I'm scheduled to, um, be the liaison for the city council. I can do that, um, but not in person. I would have to watch it later on. That's the same night as the Ventura County Watershed Council, which, which, um,
Oh.
I'm compelled to be at. So, either someone.
Print yourself an agenda and watch the video and take notes.
I can do that.
Great. Yeah, and you have the MAC meeting in March, so. I would look forward to that, because I won't be here on the 11th. I, I will not be attending. Normally do. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Anything tickle your fancy that we haven't covered?
But I'll just, I'm saying that I, since Kathy did the, accidentally did the city council meeting for me, I will do the April 14th for you.
Oh, thank you. Actually, no, I noticed neither, none of this says Kathy on it, so I don't know where I got that it said Kathy. It confused the two of us. I think it was something else I did. I can't use that excuse.
Assignments around with us, so, understood.
So, am I redoing it, or, like, are you doing two meetings in a row?
Yes.
Okay, there being no other evident business before the commission, at 7:48, I declare this meeting adjourned.